Follow-up discussion on the general fund budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Good evening, councilwoman there. So we're at the utility fund, that's the last fund that we're going to discuss, other than, you know, some follow-up on the general funds or any of the other follow-ups that we need. Today, you know, I'll talk about the utility fund, also related to the general fund. We'll, I'll discuss our, the proposed tax rate and that calculation. And then also review some of the supplemental requests again. So this is where we are in the utility fund right now. So we have had, last few months have been unseasonally wet. So our July water cells were a little lagging, as you can see in this graph. So we started off pretty strong in the beginning of the year, but we're expecting to kind of be a little bit under budget for our water cells, just because of the wet summer that we've had so far. And in conjunction with that is our sewer cells. It's not as dry-stick deficit, but we are seeing a little lower cells than what was budgeted. And then related to expenses for administration, we had a nineteen thousand increase in expenses. Sixteen thousand is related to credit card fees. A lot of our customers are paying online. Also, we have a draft, credit card draft option online, and we're just seeing more utilization of that. And then also, we have about a three million, or three thousand dollar increase in bill printing and delivery cost. So for operations, sewer line maintenance, we are, well, for operations, we are over budget by one hundred and one thousand dollars. Related to that is the sewer line maintenance. We had a budget of seventy nine thousand dollars. It's projected to be one hundred and seventy five, and this was related to an emergency sewer manhole replacement by gas system due to lift station equipment failure with some flooding. And then also, we have the water storage tank maintenance. That budget originated at three hundred and fifty three thousand. We're projecting it to be a hundred and fifty three thousand. So there is a, about a two hundred thousand dollar decrease related to the lake ground storage tank repaid. That was delayed to next fiscal year. It was originally budgeted.
Okay, can you, sorry, can you go back to administration real quick on the credit card fees? So do we not charge a surcharge? Do you use up credit cards when they pay the bills?
No, we don't.
For some reason, I thought we did.
There is a convenience fee that our software provider charges. It's like a dollar fifty per transaction, but that doesn't go to us, that goes to our credit card, our software vendor.
For some reason, I was thinking it was going to us, but no, that makes sense.
And so our goal for our operating days is ninety days, but not to go less than fifty five. So we are projecting at the end of this fiscal year to be at a hundred and thirty two days, which is still a pretty good decision. And this is looking into next fiscal year. We have water cells, we're expecting, you know, to slightly increase in water sales each year. Hopefully, we don't have the dry summer that we had today or this year. This is always just kind of begins based upon four years' trend of what it is, but we never really know how the weather's going to turn out. But we are projecting water revenues to be six point five million. And then also with sewer cells, we're expecting a slight increase of four point three million dollars. And the waters, you know, with water, our sewer cells, we always have a max of fifteen thousand gallons, so that it's a little bit more, it's easier to predict. So related to expenses for administration, we're expecting credit card fees to continue to increase. And then we do have an additional cost related to our software vendor. And for operations, we're going to experience an increase in personnel, one hundred and eighty one thousand related to the cost of loading, living adjustments and market pressure, and then also increase in the health insurance premiums. For the water storage tank maintenance, we're going to put the budget at eight hundred and fifty thousand, and that's related to Lake Vista and Southwood Ground Storage repainting projects. We try to phase those out, one project at a year, but since the Lake Vista is going to start early out next fiscal year, we probably have two next year. And now water line maintenance, we are expecting a decrease of seventy nine, or of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's related to a camera that we had purchased in this fiscal year to perform water line condition inspections, leak audits, and locating this infrastructure. And then lift station maintenance, we're expecting a decrease of eighty thousand dollars because in fiscal twenty five, we replaced the motor control center in lift stations three, five, and five. And then we're also going to do it, we're just going to do one lift station in fiscal twenty to twenty six. So this brings us to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District fee rates. We get a preliminary rate from the Upper Trinity during our budget process, so we can base those fees on those preliminary numbers. For twenty twenty six, for the water volume, we're expecting to see an increase from, from the rate, from one point two dollar fifty six to a dollar seventy two. With that, we expect our volume cost to be one point four million dollars. And then the demand charges, which is a constant throughout the year. It's established, and we just pay it monthly. So it's a little easier to predict, it's not based upon volume. We are expecting that to be one point six million dollars.
They give a reason, I mean, the volume cost going up almost ten percent through.
Well, and the Dallas Water District is also increasing their fee by ten percent over to a meeting. With the Dallas Water District.
So that's just flowing through from Dallas.
Just flowing through to us. And then we have the sewer fluid volume charges. The fee was one point three seven, or a dollar thirty seven, it's increased to a dollar forty. And so we are expecting to see a slight increase to be six hundred and thirty five thousand versus three hundred and ninety five this year.
What was the spike in twenty four?
It was a flood, and there was. Then we have the demand charges. We subscribe to one point six five MGDs, million gallons per day. Are, again, that's kind of, it's not based upon volume, so it's pretty predictable. We expect that to be one point one million two hundred and seventy five thousand. It also includes the capital related to joint facilities that we're paying. Is basically paying, I believe, the debt service for that ability. And then the sewer line to the Upper Trinity, and that's also a flat fee. They've given us a fee of two hundred and five thousand this fiscal year.
So is that to pay off debt for the two hundred and five? Or do we pay for water and then pay rent to get, we treat it and we pay rent for a line to get it to here?
Right, yeah, we have the facilities.
So the sewer line that we rented for like two hundred thousand dollars a year, basically? That Upper Trinity sewer line to Upper, is that what that is? Or is that paying off any debt for that sewer line?
It's the force main, that's solely us and a little piece of town of Double O. And then the gravity main, when it hits and the current, and everybody comes together to get to the wastewater treatment.
Is that just a rental fee, or is that paying off service to a debt fee?
I don't know if they have any more debt, but yes, it's a, it's probably a rental fee for their maintenance.
So this is related to the wholesale cost recovery. So when the Upper Trinity increases their rates, we try to kind of match rates as a pass-through through our customers. So what we are suggesting is to increase, you know, our current rate is, for the water, is twenty four dollars for a demand charge, and then a dollar twenty five for the volume, and then the sewer, twenty two dollars for demand, and a dollar fifty for volume. So we're proposing for twenty twenty six to increase water demand charge to twenty four, twenty five, and the volume to one thirty seven. And then for sewer, the demand charge is from twenty two forty, and then a dollar fifty four for volume. That will kind of, in our estimates, give us a net surplus of just two thousand dollars for twenty twenty six. So this is an example of a bill. It's a twelve thousand gallon water usage and a fifty six hundred gallon wastewater. It would be a dollar thirty four, seventy two with our current rates, and it would translate to a hundred and thirty seven dollars and three cents with the new rate.
Rhonda, are you adding something up?
I got it.
So what these rate changes were, you may run a positive balance next year, but looking at FY twenty seven and onwards, we're going to be hopefully short, so are we?
These surpluses and shortfalls aren't considering the rate changes. It's just to illustrate what we need to make up, and that's the, that's the potential rates that we might see in the future.
So do the rate changes below bring that into a net net?
Only for twenty twenty six.
No, I mean, if you, the rate changes that you're proposing down below, did that cover?
That would cover the shortfall right now.
Would it cover the shortfall, so like for twenty seven, you've got an increase of, what, seventy five cents? And then sixty cents on the sewer, would that cover the one nineteen?
I just think incorporate in the number so that we can see what our surplus is, but.
So is there a way to, sorry, is there a way to level these out year over year so that one year we're not going up a quarter, next year we're going up seventy five cents? Does it make sense to go just fifty cents a year and make it when we can get it?
We can do that.
I'm just asking, I don't, you know, it all adds up at, at some point. I'm just worried, you know, this year's okay, it's only a quarter, but next year, cutting my water bill, for sure.
Water's going wrong.
Yeah, and we don't know, I mean, the unknown is what Upper Trin, yeah, what Upper Trinity is going to do also. So we historically haven't done it until we know what, what the rates will be.
Been there seven years, I should know. Have we been raising rates every year?
Not every year, sometimes, depending if we have a surplus just because of.
So it's fairly new that we're doing this annually, so.
I mean, we do it maybe every other year or so.
But now we're looking at doing it every year?
Potentially, depending on what, what happens. It's not necessarily we are going to do it every year. It will, we have to reevaluate it every year to see where we are.
How do we estimate the water usage?
Just historical usage over four, five years. Just to get rid of, normalize some of the drought years and the wet years.
Maybe Scott can answer. So do we have, like, a meter of the water coming in versus how much we use to see what we're losing in our system?
There's master meters from the Upper Trinity, that's how they bill us with their demand charges. Yes, we have meters on our distribution system as we pump out of the ground storage tanks. And then we do comparisons of building, utility billing, what we're pumping and what we're receiving, and we come up with water loss, and we're less than ten percent.
And to Rhonda's question, and probably why you're asking, we do report that at the TCEQs. We submit all of that to make sure that, of course, the, the loss, the loss ratio is really not bad for, for a system.
No, I, I was, yeah, because, I mean, I was just thinking, that's the only way to save money for our residents would be to let, be less leaky, but we're already less leaky, so can't go much less leakier.
The other part of our utility fund is impact fees. We collect impact fees when a contractor's, you know, needing utility services. We have, since we're billed out, we're not collecting a whole lot of, you know, impact fees. Most of the amounts that's in the collections slash interest is interest. I think we have nine thousand this year that we've collected. And we do expect in twenty twenty six that we would collect some impact fees from Magnolia Village, so that's why we have nine thousand there as impact fees for those twenty five units and, you know, interest. And so we have historically applied a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our impact fee balance to debt service for utility fund. We also have a annual transfer to the general fund to play a paper of general administrative services. And so looking at our five-year outlook, this is that wholesale pass-through adjustment that we just talked about. There, because we are now paying the water tank repainting through operations, it's the debt issuing debt related to that. We will likely need to look at a city rate adjustment in fiscal twenty seven. The last time we had a rate on the city's portion was in twenty seventeen, so it's been ten years. I think before that, it was ten years, so it looks like ten years is kind of the number we're looking at. We would need to generate about seven hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue to keep our working capital at around the ninety day, ninety day of operations.
You're showing a big drop in operations, you know, four point eight down to four point one, what assumption is that? Twenty twenty seven.
I think it's.
Twenty twenty eight.
I think that's when all the tank, storage tanks will be completed. So we're budgeting about five hundred, seven hundred thousand for each one. And so for debt service, the block is our existing. There's a potential of issuing some debt next fiscal year as well. And so that's included in the expense side. Questions about the utility fund?
The seven hundred thousand dollar projection for city costs to citizens, what does that work out to per customer?
It's about twelve dollars per month, per service, per resident or account.
Twelve dollars?
Twelve dollars a month.
Per resident.
Per resident.
Her service.
Saves a lot.
That seems like a lot.
Twelve dollars just for help.
Five hundred root pops.
We want to get, is that like a one-time injection, or are we just going to keep collecting it? Because that's a one-time expense.
Well, it's.
It's every year.
Yes, every year, so we'll set the rate, and they will collect seven hundred every year. So that would just keep our working capital at close to ninety days.
We just want to raise it for ten years, once we raise it.
I guess, once every ten years, that's twelve, buck twenty a year, I mean, a buck twenty a month per year. Twelve dollars. Well, the Upper Trinity does the same thing that CAD does. It's nine point nine nine percent, you look at all their stuff, it's nine point nine six, nine point nine nine, just like when we get our appraisals, very good with the number ten, when I was doing the increases.
Speaking back to the anticipated rate increase and going back to Robert's point, is there a way that we could look at that for nominal increases for a couple of years and then stagger the increases?
Yeah, so if we do the wholesale rate adjustment, we'll probably be looking at that in like November, so we can revisit that if you would prefer to kind of do a higher one. We just try to not, we don't want to collect more than what we're passing through to Opportunity, so we try to kind of stay with there. But it's, you know, it's a moving target, you're always going to be off a little bit. So definitely look at that and workshop.
And of course, part of you with either a dry summer or wet summer really does affect it. If you've got a couple of dry summers, you can easily adjust that rate later on. Same token, if it's really wet, you may have to adjust the other way.
Yeah, I think last year we did adjust it the other way. Reduce the rates.
One more question, if I may. Electronic payment, credit, those are the swipe fees for credit card payments, a hundred and ninety thousand?
No, those, we provide customers that are paying by draft.
The five dollar discount?
Yeah, the five dollars discount, also included in that is a senior discount.
So if I'm making use of the five dollar discount and I'm paying by credit card, the city's really losing out.
It's only when they set up on bait draft, so it's like credit or checking account draft.
So are we sure about that? So if I pay my water bill with a credit card, I'm not getting that five dollar discount? Okay. I'll have to check it, but all right. All right, you get charged for it. I'll have to look at it, I thought I was getting it, so maybe I'm special.
Well, we know that.
Send extra cup of coffee.
So that's what that electronic payment is, the five dollar discount for draft and for the over.
So that's what that electronic payment is, the five-dollar discount from draft and for the over 65.
Right. What's the over 65 discount?
It's five dollars also.
Oh, so you get $10 if you hit that mark?
You're senior and you and you direct.
Plus a discount in your garbage.
It's gotta be both of those criteria.
I have to go ahead before I do. So maybe my mom can move in with me.
So one last question. So how much are we paying in credit card fees?
Um, we're paying, I think maybe eighty thousand dollars a year.
I said 500 rooftops, right? Is there a way that we could just even toy with recapturing that with a convenience fee or something? Or upping the, no, I know, but upping it a little bit cuz.
There should just be the credit card, like every other place. When I.
Any public entity I pay with a credit card, they're charging me three bucks or something. So.
Sometime.
I don't think we'd need to charge three to make that up, but.
What's the percentage?
I, 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 yeah. That would be my suggestion is perhaps we look at upping our convenience fee to cover that swipe fee or ninety thousand's gonna matter.
I think every penny counts, though. I mean.
No, I, I know, I guess.
I mean, I would.
But that's a no-brainer in my mind cuz I'm used to paying it when I pay for public stuff.
For the convenience.
Yeah.
Yeah. When I fill my kid's lunch account, I always maximize it cuz it's the same fee regardless if it's five dollars or a hundred dollars.
Unless they're doing bank draft, but I understand bank drafts don't, we don't incur that fee.
Right, that's right. I mean, we do have some bank, the banks do charge us, but it's a minimal fee compared to, um, credit card processing fees.
So that would be a suggestion I'd have for the future, I guess.
We need to check your water bill for sure.
I'll check it when I get home.
We'll do a full audit or something.
Yeah.
I swear I saw it.
Now somebody can come in and audit. Thanks.
Save me a couple bucks.
Texas Rangers will come in.
I want my two dollars.
So, um, on the agenda of the council meeting today, we have, um, for council to consider a motion to propose a tax rate instead of public hearing on the rate and FY 2025, 26 budget. Um, just want to mention that this doesn't commit council to a tax rate. It's just the maximum amount that we can actually approve. Um, we can always, the council can decide on a lower tax rate if they choose. Um, just to let you, this, this is just where our tax rate is for this year. Um, we had a taxable value of, um, 3 billion, 375 million. Um, our INS rate is 0.75540. And our M and L rate is 0.424733. So our total tax rate is, um, 0.5007 or 273. Um, our tax levy related to that is 16 million, 887,405 dollars. Um, and this is the tax rate history. Um, our rate was, um, stayed the same from fiscal 2019 to 2022 at 0.56302. We lowered it in 2023 at 0.54685. And then 2024, it's 0.501394. And then at last year, it was, um, 0.500273. Um, so this year, our, um, tax roll came in at 3.5 billion dollars. Um, we adjust, we need to make some adjustments to the roll when we're, um, calculating the, uh, no, no rate, the new rate. Um, and that includes adding in any protests. It's kind of amazing. We only have 150,000 dollars added protests right now. Only two pieces of property. Um, and then our, um, new growth, uh, we take that out and that's 9 million right now. So that gives us an adjusted roll of 3.5 million dollars. And so, um, the state comptroller gives us a worksheet in calculating our tax rate. It's like 86 lines long. I'm just gonna dense it for you. Um, the first rate that we need to calculate is the no new revenue rate. And so what, um, how we calculate that is we take the previous year's adjusted, um, maintenance and operation levy and divide that by the current year adjusted tax roll. So this number, um, our tax roll minus the protest or add the protest minus the new growth. And so that gives us a, um, rate, uh, no new revenue rate of, um, 0.480268. So that's just basically, um, no new revenue at all. If we applied this rate to our tax roll, we would have no additional revenue. It would just be zero, except for the new growth.
What is the new growth calculation consistent?
I'm sorry?
What does the new growth value consist of?
Um, just improvements and.
There, that's what, we added 9,365,000. Just in fiscal.
Right, just this tax share. I think it was 20 million last year.
Not a calendar year, right?
I'm sorry?
That's not based on calendar year. That's based on our fiscal year.
That's based upon, um.
That would be calendar.
A calendar year.
Yeah, the calendar year, um, that from the tax, um, assessors, appraisal district, I'm sorry. So then we need to calculate the voter approved rate. And so to do that, we take the, um, previous, um, year adjusted M and L levy. Um, that's a error. I wrote that down. Uh, which take, um, yeah, I mean, you take the, um, the, it's an adjusted O and M rate, um, from last year. And then we divide that by the current, um, adjusted tax roll. And that will give us what our, um, rate is. And then to, um, we have the 3.5 increase that we are allowed. So that would get us at 0.422398. And then, um, also in the rate is a, an INS debt rate. And so with that, we take our, uh, current, our debt service for this year and multiply or divide it by the total taxable value. And that gives us a 0.78587 with the total voter approval rate at, uh, 0.500986.
That's so confusing. That is crazy.
I have a question, not really a question. And not to be doom and gloom, but we have the projections going into 2030. All the numbers going into the budget, we have projections for. We're not fortunate enough to where we have no new growth within 60 acres. So what does this look like potentially in 2030? For our tax rate? Because we keep on, we will keep on balancing, yes, but eventually I I don't see how we don't go back up.
Yeah, I would expect this to come down over years if we don't have additional, um, growth.
So.
We're gonna take it to the voters.
Yeah, I mean, in 20, in 2030, do we see it go the opposite direction to where we're either at, we have to go back up to 56 cents or higher because of where we stand?
Yeah, I know, but which say, which would require a vote.
Our values go up, break them down.
Well.
Or we cut services.
Well, we've got half a cent that goes to DCTA and now is the time to have a discussion with them because according to Corin, they can just buy into the system and don't have to pay the last 20-something years. Ask them to buy us out or reduce the rate. Number two, we have an additional half a cent for 4B tax that pays for our trails and all, which are wonderful. But the voters might need to decide on half twos, half to haves and nice to haves. And, and so we need to be cognizant of everything from here on out on long-term maintenance of anything new we bring online in our city. But those are two revenue streams that we do have available the voters can approve. However, the DCTA angle needs to be worked sooner than later because Corin's, they're gonna get everything we've poured into over 20-something years, they just get to skirt in and and take. And we, we, we don't get any benefit. So that's my two cents. That's how we can make money.
That is two pockets of money.
Yeah.
One, we definitely.
But I just have been looking at this lovely presentation on Corin's. It doesn't say anything about paying in the back 20-something years, but they haven't paid into the system. But they can fund a train station. Well, what about buying us out? Just buy us out. Cuz we don't get transient oriented development. We don't get that increase in sales tax.
Train station in Corin.
Huh?
They want a train station.
Yeah, and they already know how they're gonna pay for it right here.
But, and I think that is definitely a conversation. To Kevin's point, going forward, we, we are gonna have to really, not this conversation.
Right.
It, it's not gonna have any effect on it at this point, but it is something going forward that we're all gonna have to be very aware of and and conversations are gonna have to be had. But.
I always, that's why I'm the maintenance girl. What is long-term maintenance on anything we bring online? Because that's something we can't get rid of.
So back to this, the proposed tax rate. What, what you're saying is tonight we are gonna vote on, it's a, it's an increase. Like, I don't even know what that number is.
Yeah, it is an increase.
Seven one thousands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What does that, uh, calculate out to, like, for a household of?
So, um, it would generate just 25,000, 20 more dollars for the city.
For the city.
Um, the average, um, taxable value in Highland Village is 590,000 dollars. So that would just be four dollars and 20 cents more. Um, we can, we've historically have kept it, um, at our existing rate instead of increasing it. Um, but I wanted to be transparent of what the calculation is, um.
I mean, for $25,000, it may not be worth the headache.
Right, yeah.
Just leave it flat.
But.
But what?
Problem is, if you don't, you gotta think about what happens to the cap next year.
Yep.
And that percentage increase.
The cumulative effect is really the most important thing.
And that's really what, and that's, that's the, that is a concern to be taken into consideration, whatever you set the tax.
This is government math. It's not even real math.
Clearly, clearly.
Legislative math.
Yep.
Well, that's why they ran away from Austin. They can't.
No.
It's like shooting BBs at a bear.
Yeah. Does he have that in it?
So, yeah, in the motion, we have a, that's approved rate. Um, and we, you know, if it's decided that we want to decrease it, that's something we can do in a later year.
If we, oh, I see what you're saying.
This doesn't lock you in. This just sets the, that's who you're letting best see.
Right.
Yeah.
They're donating mayor's salary.
Yeah.
That walks up there.
All those fringe benefits and your kickbacks.
And Robert knows it's five dollars a month.
That's right.
That's right.
I make it up right there. Been embezzling for the last decade.
I'm gonna take it. And, uh, we'll, we'll pass the plate. See if we can pick up that but. Um, so then go back from one slide. It was 20. Well, that's it right there. The tax rate was 2019 to 2022, 56 cents. And then when did the state pass the legislation with the no new revenue?
23.
In nineteen.
Or 19. Or was it, I thought it was in the 21?
Or did it fell in 19, then it was 21?
I think it's 21 because that, that tells a tale right there. I thought it was 21.
That's just 19 got scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But after COVID.
21.
Everybody started.
So then.
So, yeah, the last few years, we've been consistently decreasing it just.
Because of the no new revenue.
Right.
Um, cap. Okay.
And we're just right there. I mean, very close to what our rate is, um.
You can see the writing on the wall without new growth.
Hmm, yeah.
And it's not a very pretty writing on the wall. We need new growth.
Well, we're gonna vote on five lots today.
There you go. That's new growth right there.
Mine's better than none, as it is.
Tells sports venues up there.
I think that goes into, um, uh, but, okay.
Moving on to our supplementals again.
No, 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 no.
Uh, what? So we, uh, and thank you, Heather, for bringing this back. I, uh, had asked for this to come back because Robert and Kevin weren't able to, uh, participate in the conversation and, and had, had not done their homework. So, but I think they have now, right?
No.
Yeah, I know, you know, Councilman Easter had some clarifications, some items that he wanted to review.
Depending how these numbers come out, yeah.
Okay, so, um, you know, the total supplementals were, um, that were submitted was 722,000. Sorry. Didn't know it was way at the bottom. Um, I had included the supplementals, they're highlighted in green, that have four out of seven votes. Um, we can address that if we need to. So that had, um, brought in the, um, um, the, um, hot hell, um, vehicle and also the recreation part-time staff. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean.
I'd like to see the wait system for the fire department come back in. I mean, that goes with the health, safety and well-being of our businesses and services.
Which number is that?
It's the second one on fire.
This one.
Oh, I'm not looking at, oh. So what's the, right, without bringing that in, what's the number now of?
Without bringing that, it's 530.
530.
530, yeah. And that would jump into 54.
538.
Okay, 58. So. And now, and now to Sean, he, uh, would like to see the, uh, like you said, the exercise equipment.
I have all the supplemental, uh, data in here. I just included it all. I, I don't, we don't wanna, we could go through it all or we can just go through the ones that you might wanna review again.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with. It doesn't look real green to me, but, but I'm okay with that. I just, um, I think Sean would like, you would like to discuss the exercise equipment.
Okay.
And.
Uh, okay, chief.
Yeah, so with the workout equipment, what we currently have is, uh, what was gifted to us, uh, approximately 15 years ago. Uh, we've got pieces on that that are starting to fray and pull apart. And, uh, to the right is what, uh, department members requested. And one thing I failed to mention with this is in conversation with Chief Rime is moving more towards a, being a public safety workout area. All of our, uh, cardio equipment is inside the fire station. And then all of our weight equipment is in what I call the, uh, just kind of the metal building out back. And so, um, with having seven on shift now, this accommodates, uh, more people, uh, to work out together. Uh, they're out there almost every evening, uh, working out. And, uh, really it's just a matter of wear and tear on what we currently have and trying to support them. And, uh, working out, staying healthy and fit, and then also. And then also shifting to where, uh, we get more of the PD over with us working out, more in different times.
This is a much more versatile piece of equipment and if, if this was not replaced this year, it's gonna get to the point where it's gonna be obsolete because of the repairs, it's.
Right, I mean, you got somebody working out on it and you have one of those cables snapped.
Oops, that's bad.
You said it was gifted to you, when?
Uh, approximately fifteen years ago is what I bet you.
So it was gifted, so it was used prior to that?
Yeah.
And that's how all of our cardio equipment is as well. It's, uh, what's the fitness places, Purple, Planet Fitness?
Yeah.
It's, it's all Planet Fitness stuff.
But we don't know how long they used it before it's given.
Correct.
And I don't have a problem with that, I'll add that to that.
The last other fifteen years.
And then the council can go and use it.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right. We don't get our beach bodies, right?
Yeah, start training for pool truck.
Yeah, fire truck pool truck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the part, that's the sting right there, okay?
Like got denied the first time.
Exactly, exactly. You warned me, you warned me.
If they had to be.
So are losers, yeah.
Yeah.
You just would've let us win.
If you'd have just let us win, then, you know, we wouldn't be having this second discussion. But, I mean, I'm, if you go back to that list, I'm, I'm good. I, I, I mean, in council, that would be something that we just need consensus on, uh, how everybody feels.
I'm okay with it.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, with that, that's a consensus.
First we go with.
Sorry.
Two?
Okay.
I guess it's over.
We just.
Yeah, that is one more. So when do we vote on this?
Not until, um.
The meeting's about.
The meeting's about, okay.
Yeah, we'll have, of course, have a special meeting in there for the tax rate.
Yeah, that one, I'll recommend it to probably.
I think it's the ninth.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's ten days, right, from the whatever, so it's?
We're gonna do.
The ninth and the?
Ninth and then do the special meeting on sixteen.
Of sixteen. Is that the get-up-early meeting?
Uh-huh, yes.
Can you go back that list real quick? I'm sorry, of the supplementals.
A lot of slides in between.
Okay, now.
So, this was brought up last meeting, and I know it wasn't at the original meeting, but the drones themselves. So six out of seven approved or recommend that. What, as a city, are we gonna do to protect the residents from surveillance, unintended surveillance in the private property?
You don't want.
I mean, is there any?
You're some kind of a, um.
First, I'd say, I don't go as much department over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. Has always been consistent in proposing some of the best policies and ordinances for our citizens overall. We depend on tech, uh, ICP, ICP, which is International Police Chiefs Association and Texas Police Chiefs Association, who are accredited across the country for developing and implementing those policies. So there'll be model policies that have been scrutinized by numerous citizens, numerous, uh, attorneys and citizens across the way. So you're gonna get the best policy built there no matter what. They're only gonna be in use for either training purposes or, um, actual events. And everything is gonna be recorded. And under those best practices, policies will obviously be reviewed, just like our current video cameras of, of, uh, from our officers, their body cameras and their cars. They're always under constant review. So if we find violations, hopefully they would be unintentional violations, but but also if there's no value to any of that video, it gets dumped, just like our, our, um, the retention for videos is so long, there's no value for, for case-related materials, it's gone. Just like block camera stuff is gone every three days. So, you're gonna get top, top line assurance that we are not there to abuse any of that, that, that equipment, just like we have Corinne.
Not to mention certain applicable state laws that you're gonna enact.
The last couple sessions that'll, that kinda deal with that problem.
I get with Robert saying, and we might have best practices, but, uh, having a one cheater, just a overview, so our citizens know that we have best practices. Cause when they see.
We don't have them to have any policies in place, so unless we know that they're actually approved, there's no reason to draft the policies. And, and, I mean, I can show you a bunch of policies, but I don't have, I don't have a single problem at all if I want to encourage, um, any type of workshop before we put that policy in place and have it done, just like in this session, to, to say, hey, here's everything you wanna throw into the kitchen sink for our policy. Let's discuss it. Have case law brought up or, or any of the state law that is applicable, so everybody understands it also, and then go from there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just having a one cheater, cause I, I'm of that too, because we all have intentions, but having it to our, put our, our people at rest, because, I mean, they're everywhere. And there's people, there's a lot going on and then going on. So if you get them, would you work with doing a one cheater for the community?
A one cheater?
Yeah, like if you said, all this policy, you will, will follow this code and whatever, just a one infographic saying, this is what our policies are.
We have it for our body cameras already out there, because, I, I mean, I just, before I, before I launch into that, uh, you know, you, I heard it from some great people who talk about enhanced video equipment from law enforcement standpoint. You're surveilled more from Walmart and other agencies than you are by the police. But, with that being said, you know, we have to deal with, uh, with, when body cameras came into play, people were saying, it's an invasion of my privacy. We have a, a one cheater out there to answer, um, why we take your picture at the end of a traffic stop on our, on our, on our phones. Cause it's all recorded part of it, also, we've had to answer those questions. We answer all the bikes and scooter questions on a one cheater. We point out golf cart one cheaters. So we can do a one cheater for the drones also, while we have them, uh, the benefit of them, things like that. And easy enough to do.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying, is just so, so they know.
They're calling it one feature.
Yeah. That is true.
That's why I'm the guy that tells you.
One cheater.
I mean, I can, yeah, we are always surveilled, but at some point, people, you can choose or not choose, and it's your home. I mean, that's where I think it gets a little more personal.
You know, the, the benefit of those things, for example, crime scenes, number one, number two is officer safety is paramount. And in today's world, people are barricaded themselves in places and are the active shooter situations that we can actually send, instead of sending, you know, in the, in the past, it was dogs, everybody was afraid of dogs. Dogs became the, the, the initial response factor, so. These things are, have an immense amount of use. Who was telling me, Arlington, uh, they launched, remember the mayor, we were at that meeting, uh, Arlington uses them for fireworks complaints to investigate and save officers from, um, responding across the city thousands of times in a night's period of time. So, we're at a very infant, um, level of entrance into this process too. Just to, A, see what they can do for us as a city, what we would use them for. And B, is there a need to continue growing that program for, for bigger and better, if, 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 if we see that happening, so.
Oh, question there, are you worried about manpower? Cause if you have an officer operating a drone, that's not an officer doing something else.
So we have resource management.
Talking about growing the program.
Resource management is huge, okay? So, in, in a daily situation, understand, I have more than just the officers on the streets. We have all of the people from CID up through me available also. We also have, um, I don't see infused yet, but enticed our auxiliaries also to be part of that program. So there, we do have enough interest for it. Uh, we also have talked to the fire department, they have an interest in it also, so that they would have people to be available for. That if it was in a police situation, we'd have multiple, multiple operators available, or certified licensed pilots, basically, to, to run these things.
Our auxiliaries, employees of the city, they're not, right? They're volunteers?
Volunteers, but they're covered in our insurance and they have to follow our policies also.
Next thing is, from a liability perspective, do they have to be sworn officers? Or is there additional liability if they're not?
What I've seen so far, no. You can make it as much as you want, but they're, they become, they become, just like they are right now, uh, out on the streets doing things that we ask them to do. We limit a lot of things they do, so they're not perceived as police, but as an operator, as a pilot with guidance and policies over them. I mean, what, what action can I take against them? Well, if they violate policy, I can get rid of them, number one. If they violate state law, I can arrest them. So, pretty, pretty big, uh, hammer over them.
So is the drone number, the, the full amount cost of the drones included in that? That line, seven hundred and twenty, whatever it was?
It was in the five, five whatever.
So it was, part of it's being paid by the taxpayer?
Right.
Um, so what is displayed here is just the general funds responsibility for some software. It's not, they can't be paid.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate you bringing this back and giving everybody an opportunity to have discussion. Does anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
There's a lot of them. Okay, so, um, this is gonna show, um, what our proposed budget for twenty twenty-six will look like after, um, the five hundred and thirty thousand dollar supplementals. Um, it will reduce our fund balance in a total of two point four million. Um, and, um, it would be a thirty-two percent.
And that's adding the exercise equipment in?
No, um, you would have to add to him more. Yeah, I'm probably not gonna change the percentage, I don't think.
Okay, perfect.
Um, so our budget calendar, um, for our next, uh, meeting in August, we'll have, um, some more general fund follow-ups. Um, and then, as we discussed, we have the public hearing and adoption of the budget and tax rate. Um, first read on, uh, September ninth, and also we'll authorize the issuance of the certificates of obligations. And then on September sixteenth, it's a special meeting, uh, the second read of the budget for the adoption of tax rate and budget.
One slide, sorry, I just had a quick question on the fund balance percent. We go from thirty-five to thirty-two, what's good? I thought it was like around the twenty-five percent range?
Yeah, that's our, that's our target, twenty-five. We don't wanna get below twenty.
But what's the five-year outlook?
I don't have it here, um.
Three years out, we're under twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
But like.
But you find ways to break it.
But that's where it's the have-to-have versus nice-to-have discussions we're gonna have to have.
Nice-to-have, nice-to-have, have-to-have discussions.
If it eats, we don't put it in the budget.
We do what?
If it eats, we don't fund it. We gotta mow it, if we gotta maintain it, we can't put it in the budget.
Feed them?
We gotta, but we can't feed them.
Take the dinners out. Just kind of, kind of council's story. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor, anybody else have any questions about? Okay, then we're gonna go into closed session. Closed session meeting in quarters, calling section, Texas Government Code, five five one point oh seven one, copy to the city attorney. More six and five five one point oh seven four, personnel, liberating the permanent city manager, city secretary.
It is 7:00 PM. I'm sorry. Am I on now? Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'll start all over. Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council Meeting. Today is August the 12th at 7:00 PM and we're on time tonight and we are thrilled about that. So, hold the applause. We are actually going to get started with, all council members are present, and Mayor Pro Tim Bryan Fierenz is going to lead us in prayer and the pledges.
Everyone bow your heads and join me, please. Gracious and Almighty God, our loving Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, giving thanks for the gift of this day and for the privilege of serving this community with purpose and care. We praise you for your abundant blessings, seen and unseen, poured out upon this place and its people. With humility, we ask for your fatherly blessing to rest upon families everywhere. Embrace the lonely and the isolated. May they feel warmth, the warmth of your presence, and know they are not forgotten. Extend your comfort and peace to those who are burdened with sickness, age, or financial hardship. Where there is sorrow, bring joy, and where there is despair, let hope rise. Today, Lord, we especially lift up the young who are beginning a new school year. Bless them with curiosity to learn, courage to grow, and kindness toward one another. Calm their anxieties, fill their hearts with confidence, and keep them safe in body, mind, and spirit. We also pray for the teachers, the staff, and all who guide them. Grant them patience when the days feel long, empathy to understand each child's needs, and joy in the calling you have placed upon their lives. Watch over our nation, Lord, and especially those entrusted with the responsibility to lead. May we walk in righteousness and seek peace in all we do. Guide our minds and hearts this evening. May our conversations be filled with humility, our decisions shaped by compassion, and our actions serve the greater good of all people. We lift up those who are grieving the loss of loved ones. Wrap them in your love and bring healing to their hearts. We also pray, pray for our brave first responders and all who serve the public. Shelter them in your mighty arms and return them safely to home, to those who cherish them. In all things, may we reflect your light, lead with wisdom, and serve with love. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag A United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. Now move right along to mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Does anybody have anything, council? No?
Well, just watch out for all the kids. It's, the next two weeks are going to be fun-filled times for everybody, so pack your patience.
That's right.
And everyone's finding different ways to get to school, and so just watch out for them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else, council? Okay. We're going to move on to city manager and staff reports.
Mary, council, I might just add on to council member Hearst's comments about schools today being the first day and having two elementary schools as opposed to one. For the first day, things went very well, so we think the rest of the week will go, go just fine. So, we appreciate everybody, the driving public and everybody taking their kids to school, how cautious they were. So, a couple of other things. The city secretary's office is taking applications for volunteers interested in serving on a board or a commission. Those interested in applying should visit their application, should submit their application this week for council consideration for this year's appointments. You can go to highlandvillage.org/volunteer for the details. The unity luncheon took place on July 29th. This event is an opportunity for our local nonprofit organizations to participate in an expo. It features the naming of the nonprofit of the year. The Highland Village Business Association, in partnership with the Flower Mountain Lewisville Area Chambers of Commerce, has held this event since 2007. Highland Village, specifically Andrew Boyd and Jenny McCann, is responsible for the luncheon-themed design and the production of videos for the three finalists. The theme this year was "The Art of Giving." The finalists for the Nonprofit of the Year Award are Independence Gardens and Giving Grace. The winner is Heart of the City. And I do again want to recognize Jenny and Andrew and Lori for their work on this event. And we are now propped and ready for the video.
My name is Rob Veal. I'm the president and CEO and founder of Heart of the City here in Lewisville. You know, our mission is very simple. It's simply to love others, serve others, and help others. We also have a business model that's really unique. We occupy real estate that has been given to us to use for the purpose of loving, serving, and helping communities.
We do the food pantries. We do our clothing ministry, which is Graham Solely Free Clothing. We do three distributions, Mobily, Thrive Academy. And Thrive Academy is life skills coaching and job skills training and that sort of thing. And with all of those things put together, we've served almost 15,000 families.
All over America, all over the United States, we're going to be able to develop these ideas of Heart of the City, and we'll teach you how to do that 100% free. We just want to get the word out that people need love, people need help, and people need to be served.
And it's the volunteers that are making all the difference. For example, there is a lady that was finishing her cancer treatment and wanted to serve in our clothing house. And she visited one day with a gentleman who was recently released from prison, and he thought he was coming for free clothing. And after visiting with our volunteer, what he ended up leaving with was a boatload of encouragement and a whole lot of hope for his future.
I'm a spokesman, I'm an advocate, I'm somebody who is going to the community and saying, here's Heart of the City. Here's why it's deserving of your support. Here's what we do, here's the difference it makes, and here's why it's important.
Every single day, there is some connection with a volunteer and a neighbor, with a neighbor and a neighbor, volunteer to volunteer. And it makes everyone feel like we are in a tight-knit community, that it's not people that we don't know, circumstances we don't understand. We just get to come together and be friends and be people. We just, we just love the small things that are happening every single day.
We have a pretty strong presence, and so people are finding us through our website, word of mouth. We also have a strong social media presence. We are partnered with 20 different business organizations. We think we're doing a pretty good job of reaching folks.
I think the most exciting thing about being part of Heart of the City is the difference we're making in the lives of people who need our help, who want to know that others care about them and will help them and will, and will help them meet their needs and will serve them. And so when we give food and clothing to people and we see their reaction, and we see the gratitude and the appreciation and the encouragement and the hope that we are able to give them, I think that makes all the difference in the world.
Did y'all hear that hum?
I do.
Okay.
I hear it.
I think it was just me, and it was like, my goodness. Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to visitor comments. Angie, do we have any?
I do, but it's for item question.
Okay, so it's for a specific item. Okay, any, no other, no other visitor comments? All right, then we'll do consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda item. An item may be moved to the action agenda for discussion if speaker's request form is submitted indicating a person's desire to comment on an item posted on the consent agenda. Council, does anybody want to move anything? All right, so consent agenda consists of, number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on July 22nd, 2025. 11, receive investment reports for quarter ending June 30th, 2025. And 12, receive budget reports for period ending June 30th. And so, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 10, 11, and 12 as read.
Thank you. And do I have a second, council?
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you, Sean. We have Councilman Nelson's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. The action agenda, number 13, we did meet in closed session but taking no action, so we are going to move to 14. Mr. Kristin, we're going to conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2025-1326, amending regulations relating to the development and use of Lot 1 and 2, Block B, Edgewood Estates, commonly known as 234 Edgewood Drive, by changing the zoning from single-family residential zoning SF-12 to a planned development overlay district with single-family residential SF-10. And this will be the first of two reads. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, mayor, council. The city's received an application to change the SF-12 zoning, SF-12, to a planned development overlay district at a base zoning of SF-10, along with four requests, special exceptions to the subdivision ordinance. And this zoning amendment would allow the property to be subdivided into six lots. Yep, six lots, construction of five homes, one's existing. And the property is 4.138 acres. On June 22nd, 2021, the city council approved a replant of the property and subdivided the property into two lots. This would subdivide the property into the six lots. The following exceptions are being requested by the applicant. They subdivide, in our subdivision regulations, property to be developed with a cul-de-sac, street length greater than 600 feet, but not more than 800 feet. The existing Edgewood Drive is, is already has a length greater than 600 feet now, so it is, it is legal non-conforming already. And this would add an additional 200 feet. The construction material that's being requested is asphalt street section instead of our standard concrete curb and gutter section. That being said, we would propose the engineer design to the North Texas Central Council of Governments Fifth Edition, the amendment of August 2023. They are also asking the subdivision to be constructed without sidewalks. The current subdivision is constructed without sidewalks. And the fourth would be, they're asking the subdivision to be constructed without curb and gutter and match the existing drainage system, a rural drainage system, which is the bar ditch and driveway culvert system. The Edgewood Estates subdivision was originally planted in 1971. It's constructed with asphalt streets and rural drainage, as I said earlier. The city staff worked with planning and zoning at the July 15th, 2025, planning and zoning meeting, and it was unanimously recommended to move forward to council with a 5-0 vote. We have received, excuse me, we received one email from a resident on Edgewood from the time that this agenda briefing and the packet was posted with the request that Edgewood Drive be widened by the city. Edgewood Drive is currently 20 feet wide and was just rebuilt by the city less than two years ago here. I'd be more than happy to cost it out and bring it forward to council if you so desire. And with that, that's my presentation. This item requires a public hearing.
So, can I just ask a quick question before we do the public hearing? What was the reason for the widening of Edgewood, the request?
The email stated with additional construction vehicles, the narrow street wouldn't be able to handle it safely.
Safety, okay. All right. Anybody else having questions for him?
Before I open the Ask him now or after?
Well, we can wait. I mean, we can do the public hearing. I just wanted to know, refer to that email.
I have a slew of questions.
Do you have a slew of questions?
We can wait after.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll do the public hearing now. I'm going to open the public hearing now. If anybody has comments for Thank you. Mr. Bassinger? If you will come and state your name and address for the record.
I'm not real funny, but my name is Jimmy Bassinger. I live at 210 Edgewood. I talked to Jason about this development, or he actually came down and talked to us and everything, and he explained everything, and I think it came out on the plat about like we discussed, and it was a very good use of Edgewood Drive, I think. It would kind of finish out our neighborhood, and so I think it's all, all good. I was a little concerned about, you know, the, calling it an overlay, you know, because overlay means different things than just changing the zoning from SF-12 to SF-10. So, I'm allergic to overlays, but other than that, it was okay. So I'm allergic to overlays, but other than that, it was okay. So I believe most of the residents on Edgewood would be approving of it, and I certainly am. Like I said, I think it would be a good, good finish of Edgewood, and the design would continue the look and feel of Edgewood Drive, and so I have no problem with that either. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this development change or zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Favor but allergic. Okay, thank you. Is anybody else on, wants to speak on this item or against? Okay, well, if not, then I am closing the public hearing at 7:18. Mr. Kristin? Mr. Feaster has some questions for you or for somebody.
May I go ahead?
Yes.
Couple of questions, I guess. First one for the fire chief, since he's not ready to speak, but is there any concern that you have with lengthening the cul-de-sac from where it is now to adding an additional 100 or so feet to that street as far as access and service goes? I know we limit lengths of dead end or cul-de-sacs for a reason, so.
Yeah, the, the main thing I would look at is the turn radius of that cul-de-sac, fire hydrant, and it would be the main two things that I would be looking at.
Okay, but if the radius is sufficient for your standards and there's a fire hydrant within a distance, you don't have any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, real quick, before you go, I'm sorry.
Please.
I know that there's currently a fire hydrant there. Would another fire hydrant be required further down?
I would need to look at the distance and see what the code specifies.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Scott?
Yes, sir.
The 537 contour. Can you explain what that is, what that limits, what encumbrances that would put on potential owners of Lot 3 and 5 if this is approved?
Right.
Let's start with what it is. What is a 537 for those that don't know?
The 537 means sea level elevation is the Corps of Engineers easement for the flood level that Lake Lewisville can get to.
Okay, so it's an easement.
The water level can legally get to 537 feet, means sea level.
Is a homeowner allowed to cut within the 537 contour?
You cannot build permanent structures in a, in the easement that have plumbing.
So they would have, houses presumably would have to be outside of that line?
And ours, and we have our city ordinance that we have to have a home two foot above freeboard.
Okay, so then-
It needs to be, an elevation of foundation is 539 minimum.
Okay, so lots 3 and 5, the way they're configured now, is there enough buildable area on those lots with the 537 that somebody can build a new house there?
Yes, they've, they've configured it to where-
Okay. And it still falls within setbacks and everything else within the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Sides, rear, front setbacks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last question, sorry. This is just, it's not a site plan, it's not a plat. What are we approving here?
You're approving-
And what's future steps?
You're approving zoning change from its current SF12 to a requested planned overlay district SF10, single-family residential.
So if we approve this, we would still presumably see a site plan and a plat?
You will see a preliminary plan and a final plan.
Okay. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Real quick, just going on the 537 before we move off of it. So you said structures with plumbing, so they would be able to build, let's say, sheds or fences within the 537?
Fences are okay. Sheds or buildings, not so much, to a point that you cannot fill in 537.
The building takes up volume, so even though it's lower, it, it takes up, you can't take away, you can't take up volume.
Okay. There's ways around it, doing LOMERs, litter map revisions through FEMA, take, take dirt, getting permits through the Corps, but they, they are very difficult to obtain.
And currently, you said Edgewood is 20 feet wide?
I believe it's 20 feet wide, is what we built it to.
And then the extension is, how, is it going to be 50 feet?
The new extension?
Yes.
Probably 150 or so.
Well, that's length, width.
The cul-de-sac should be similar.
Oh, yeah.
The right-of-way is 50.
So it's basically going to go from 20-
It's a little over 150 feet.
150 feet?
Additional length.
Right, but width. So basically, I'm thinking if Edgewood is currently 20, is it going to get wider?
It will match, will match to 20.
Okay.
The right-of-way is, is okay, but the, the cross-section of the paving, existing paving is, is there 20. But right now, the, the existing cul-de-sac, if you want to call it a cul-de-sac, is not really a cul-de-sac. So when we design and construct the new cul-de-sac, it will be an 80-foot radius. Yes, ma'am.
So when you get, let's go back to the 537. When you say fencing, do they mean, does that mean board fence, like wood? Because I've seen them, they allow wrought iron with openings. Is it specific on the fencing? I guess my question is, not question, my ask is, I don't know if the property owner or developers here, is, I've been to several different meetings in different cities that are lakeside, and the people have bought on a 537, and then they do nothing, but I can't do this, I can't do this, I can't do this. So my ask is, when the preliminary plat and the funnel block comes through, if there's an explicit list of what can and cannot, people may not read it, but just to kind of lessen the amount of tears, if, if it's on the preliminary plat, I just, I've just seen it happen so much, and, and the people, this is their home and all, so my ask is to be very explicit of what can allow today. That's my only ask.
Sure.
If I might jump in here, one of the things that's going to need to happen probably is the property owner is going to need to actually look at and read the flood easement that is owned by the Corps of Engineers and the federal government, because it's that easement, because these are all easements, these all easements have what can and can't happen as far as obstructions in those easements, as well as the allowances for the flooding. I've, it's been a few years since I've read one, because I had to read, I think I had to read some of them in relation to the park acquisition, and that's been, you know, some years ago. But, but the terms of those easements will dictate what's, in addition to anything else we may have with respect to our own floodplain regulations as to what's allowed, and they actually may be, because of the nature of the easement itself, it actually may be more restrictive than even our floodplain management regulations will be.
Oh, I'm 100% sure they are.
Yeah, you're probably-
And you're right, each, but I think these easements were based on, my, my thing is, is the, the head guy at the Lewisville Lake, he's super approachable, just if they could have that discussion and just get the list, because you, I know you can't have docs and there's things, just, just enough to where, they're made aware, so when they put their life savings in this home, and they're like, oh, well, I can't do this, at least they were warned.
Yeah. Right, and of course, again, being the real estate guy, as I am, you know, it's kind of buy everywhere, be sure to read your title policy and title commitment and the documents that, which we all know, and I know as well as anybody, about 98% of the people who buy property, homes, don't do that.
But I have seen, if it's on the plats and preliminary plots, I have seen it does break down. I mean, it, at least, it's, it's not in a pile of stuff, and it's just right there. That's all my only ask.
Well, and, and the plat will have the recording information for the easements on there anyway, much as our site, the site plan here does. So it'll already, it's already, you know, the, the information is there, it'll be on, the, the recording information for the document, easement itself will be on the plat, as it always is for all of our plats, and, because that'll, that's a requirement for, for plating, is to have those easements shown. So, and then, of course, because it's on the plat, it'll convers, it'll then translate over to the survey that the homeowner will obtain when they purchase the home and hopefully finance the home. You know, the, obviously, most lenders are going to require the survey, in this case, they're going to require probably flood insurance for most of these lots, if not all of these lots. And so that'll be, you know, the elevation certificates will be required, you know, to baseball elevation certificates, all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, in addition to some of the information we already acquire on the plats, you know, be enough information to access the documents if we don't regurgitate the documents themselves onto the plat.
Just a few bullet points of the big no-no's would be helpful.
Yeah.
Robert, do you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, last question for me. The cul-de-sac appears to infringe on the 537 line. Assuming we're cutting lower than the 537, is there any issue with that? I'm assuming drainage is going south here. From a city perspective, are we okay with our cul-de-sac potentially flooding in 100 year event for maintenance or longevity or anything like that?
Well, let's remember, this is just an exhibit of a concept plan. It's, it's not a site plan, it's not the plat.
So I'd rather think about this now than later.
We would probably move it outside of the 537 and put it on the edge.
Okay. But, no, I was just going to say, could we cut within the 537? We're adding volume, but I know they still tend to frown on that.
We would, we would have the property owner and design engineer work with the Corps to get the proper documentation.
Okay. Sorry, very last question. Do they have to survey the 537 line? Do they have to physically locate it in the field? Okay.
I'm looking at the, the drawing, and you can tell this is the map line, so they haven't gone, I mean, it, it looks like there's a, there's-
Yeah, it could be all the way over Lot 3.
Yeah, so, and if the easement's written, like, most in this area, it's tied to the contour, they'll, they'll tie it down.
Kevin, did you have a question?
Yeah, with the current cul-de-sac, is there any plan to cut that to where you have your consistent road of 20 feet going all the way to the new cul-de-sac? Because right now, it's, looks a little bit like a peanut right. We have one cul-de-sac leading, going down into a bigger one, so intention to cut that, give it back to the property owners on either side?
Well, the right-of-way will be reconfigured to match the bar, a straight bar ditch, yes.
Great.
Okay. Counsel, does anybody else have any questions? I will entertain a motion if not. Mr. Kixmiller?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-1326, amending regulations relating to development of lots 1 and 2, Block B, on Edgewood Estates.
Okay, counsel, will you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bearden's a second. Motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie, 7-0. All right. Number 15, consider resolution 2025-3202, suspending the September 17th, 2025 effective date of the proposal for CoServe Gas to implement interim GRIP rate adjustments for gas utility investment in 2024. Ms. Miller?
Pursuant to the Texas Utility Code, CoServe has filed an application for an interim rate adjustment with the Railroad Commission and the municipalities that it serves on July 18th, 2025. This proposal applies to the entire service area, which includes the city of Highland Village. We are members of the steering committee, so we are representing the residents of Highland Village. They, CoServe is asking for a increase of $3.33 per month for residential and $8.05 per month for commercial. And so this resolution will suspend the September 17th, 2025 effective date by 45 days to give us time to evaluate the rate and analyze it. So we would just, after the passing of this resolution, we'll send it to CoServe and our city council to, to act on it.
And we do this every year?
I'm sorry?
I said, we do this every year?
Not every year.
When everybody asks for a rate?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Rhonda?
Where do we have CoServe Gas? Oh, there you go, see?
West side.
On the west, okay, that's what I was wondering. I learned something new today.
There you go. Yes. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Kixmiller? Oh, your light was on, I thought you didn't. All right, then I will entertain a motion. May I want to make a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-3202, suspending the September 17th, 2025 effective date of the proposal by CoServe Gas, limited to implement interim GRIP rate adjustments for gas utility investment in 2024.
Okay, we have a motion. Counsel, does anybody, a second?
A second.
Mr. Feaster? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie, 7-0. Thank you, and don't go anywhere, you're next. Consider ordinance 2025-1327, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. This is the first of two reads.
Yes, we-
So this is our third budget amendment that we brought before you, that for fiscal
year 2024, 2025. Part of our budget process is looking at projections to close out the year and identifying any overages so that we can present to you. So for the general fund, we have a net change of, well, it's a negative 321,000. That means we're below our, our original budget by that amount. So included in that is just various personnel items for all departments. That's a result of just turnover or different elections of insurance, or just some of the, maybe, some citywide incentives that are originally budgeted and just human resources and are allocated in actual validity to other departments. Then we have for finance, a $2,000 increase related to the credit card, increase credit card utilization. And then for fire, we have a capital item that's 10,000 over budget. It's related to a rugged terrain vehicle that was priced higher than it was expected. And then for streets, we have 193,500, replacement of signs, of barriers, additional streetlight utility payments and costs associated with the overlay project. And then for maintenance, we have a decrease in our budget related to electrical upgrades and a generator upgrade here at City Hall that has been delayed to next fiscal year, so we won't be encumbered in this year, in this fiscal year. And then for utility fund, we have a net change of 180,000, which includes utility administration for increased credit card use and cost escalation for the software, and then printing and delivery of the bills. And then for utility operations, we have 150,000 for emergency manhole replacement not accounted for in the original budget. And for core lease parks, we're asking for an increase of 119,500. 88,500 is related to utilization of off-duty officers and combined, combined with the cost of two overlay projects that are occurring at Polino and one at Coopress. For the capital projects fund, we're asking for 1,467,000 related to the 2024 tax note that was approved in late August of last year. Usually, the capital projects fund isn't budgeted except for, you know, through the capital improvement program, but this being vehicles, we thought we'd better get it on the bugs. So it includes equipment- So it includes equipment that were identified from various departments. The tax note is a three, we're trying, we need to spend the tax note in three years, so we appropriated what we expect to spend in 2026 through the budget process. And then for utility, drainage utility, we have a net increase of $20,000, which includes additional costs related to the Fogger ATV and then public safety fund, increase of $25,000, which is related to increase in the Texas Fallen Officer sponsorships and then dispersing those funds to the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And then last, we have the Highland Village Economic Development for $5,000, and that's related to a design study for FM 407 Village Connector. And so this is the first of two reads on this ordinance.
Okay. Counsel? Does anybody have any questions? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve 2020, ordinance 2025-1327, adopting amendments to the fiscal year budget, 2024-25 budget, first of two reads.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cox, seconded. Any further discussion, questions, counsel? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Carry 7-0. Thank you. Heather?
Speaking.
Consider the ad valorem tax rate for year 2025 and set a public hearing date on the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget and proposed tax rate.
So the truth and testation requires a public hearing proceeding by required public notice if the tax rate that's being considered is, will exceed the lower of the voter-approved rate or the new revenue, no new revenue rate. We have calculated the no new revenue rate to be 0.480268. Our voter-approved rate is 0.500984. So this vote would not commit counsel to approving this rate, it's just what will be proposed and the rate that's approved cannot exceed this rate, but it can be lower. We also are recommending a public hearing to be set on September 9, 2025. And so if, we would, we are recommending that you move to propose a rate of .500273, using this specific language on the agenda briefing.
And again, that .500984 is a ceiling. It cannot go above that, but it can be lower.
That's correct. It can be lower, but it can exceed...
Okay.
The no new, or the voter-approved rate.
Okay. All right. Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
I did have a question.
Yes.
I thought the last number I heard was .500273.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, that was my error.
No, I just want to make clear, we're, we're setting the bar at .500984 as the motion is...
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify, sorry. I think I misheard, but that's fine.
Okay, yes. If you want to, you make a motion, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the rate of .500984 per $100 valuation be proposed for adoption as the city's ad valorem tax rate for 2025 tax year. And set November 9, 2025 is the date for holding the public hearing to receive public comment on said tax rate for the 2025-2026 fiscal term budget.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fiorenza? All right, any further questions? All right, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Carry 7-0. All right.
Thank you.
Where are you going? Don't you want to stay for the next one? I'm just kidding. Okay, number 18, consider ordinance 2025-1328, amending Chapter 10 Health and Sanitation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Highland Village, Texas by adding Article 10.07, Handbills, regulating distribution of handbills on residential property within the city. And this will be the first of two reads also. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on this item? Was there anybody, no, okay. All right, counsel, who, who's doing this one?
I will. So, Mary, counsel, I know that some of you have received complaints, and I've received complaints as well from time to time when these advertising circulars are, are distributed throughout the community. They often end up in the street, or they're in a yard, they get rained on, they really become litter, and it becomes an issue. So this ordinance would amend the Health and Sanitation chapter to address handbills, and it would make it unlawful for any individual handbill distributor and/or handbill sponsor to distribute, deposit, place, throw, scatter, or cast any handbill upon any residential property or cause it to be distributed, deposited, placed, thrown, scattered, or cast any handbill upon any residential property. This would really give us an enforcement measure that we could take. Of course, the first step, we would try to contact the company, explain to them, we've just adopted this ordinance and they're no longer allowed in the city. If that did not go far enough, we then could fine them $500 a day, or up to $500 a day. And again, this is the first of two readings. If, if we do want to pass this ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Robert, do you have a question?
I do have a question. So the ordinance, excuse me, it defines a handbill, handbill distributor, and a handbill sponsor. So the $500 per offense, who has assessed that penalty? Is it the handbill distributor or is it the handbill sponsor?
We could actually probably go against any of the three because effectively, they're all complicit in the violation. So it's possible we could, we could charge all three.
Okay. All right.
I think Rhonda?
You have a follow-up question?
I do, I gotta think about it.
You gotta think about it.
I gotta put it in words.
Okay. I think Rhonda...
Sean cut his hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sean?
With regards to $500 for each offense, is that like per week that it goes out, or is it per household that it goes to?
It would be per, well, it's, it's potential, each residence that it goes to could be a separate violation. So it's, yes, I mean, for each residence, if it goes on a residence, you know, if it goes on a, you know, block of homes, then we could file a complaint with respect to each one of those homes.
Thank you.
Rhonda?
How does this ordinance effect get out the vote efforts?
Well, it's not, it...
Because by definition...
Yeah. It, well, if they're throwing these in people's yards just routinely, I mean, I'll tell you, if, to the extent we have First Amendment issues that may come into play in the nature of the materials, we'll, we'll have to review that. But the, the fact is, if what they're doing is just tossing the stuff into people's yards and not properly fixing it on a door or putting it in a file, in a, in a mailbox, I mean, the whole, the concept here is, it's primarily an anti-littering type of...
It's just, it says you can't do it, but a positive defense is if you secure it.
Yeah.
So they're already breaking the law, right? If they go secure it.
No.
If you're doing, get out, is that...
No, it, no, it's a defense to violation if they're properly securing it.
Okay.
They would, yeah, they would, they would have defense.
That's only, it's just, we have a lot of people that are active in the community, especially during election season, and a lot of people block them off.
And they're going, putting cards and flyers for candidates on the doors and, as long as that's what they're doing, as opposed to just tossing it in people's yards or on their sidewalks...
Okay.
Which is really the main, has been the main complaint.
Mr. Fiorenza?
Mr. Feaster had his on first.
Oh, he did? Mr. Feaster?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I have heartburn thinking that we can potentially find the handbill distributor, $500 for each house that he's told to distribute these handbills to. He's not going to know the rules that the city of Highland Village has. That should be on the handbill sponsor that is making money off of the distribution of these things.
Understood. And I think, you know, we've got prosecutorial discretion as to who to go to. The first folks we would probably be going to would be the handbill sponsor. That's typically who we address, so they can then filter it down through their system and adjust how they're doing, doing their distribution. I mean, I, you know, again, the mayor, mayor brought the one, I guess you got today.
In my yard today.
I received, you know, I live in Grapevine. I received these exact same one in my mailbox in Grapevine yesterday.
I didn't get the light.
And so, and so I know this company that does these and gathers these and prints these and has them distributed will put them in people, will have them sent through the postal service and have them placed in mailboxes, you know, and now, the mayor asked me, and I honestly had not checked to see if the city of Grapevine has this kind of ordinance. This ordinance is primarily based on one that was adopted a number of years ago, City Plano, actually, you know, was upheld through a court challenge. And so that's one I really wanted to be sure we were focused on because there obviously are some First Amendment concerns sometimes with the distribution of this kind of material, with these materials. So I wanted to be sure we were, and, and the ordinance effectively is a, is a proper, you know, as far as First Amendment goes, proper time, place, and manner kind of, I think, kind of ordinance, you know, when it comes to trying to do a First Amendment analysis. And so, so I, you know, you know, that's why, kind of going back to Councilmember Hurst's question on the campaign season, I think, could we, you know, could we charge people with just dumping a bunch of campaign material over people's, around people's yards? Yeah, I think we could hit them with a lead, you know, because as long as they're not littering people's front yards with campaign material just randomly, I think there's a potential we could, we could actually cite somebody for that. But back to Councilmember Feaster's question and concern, you know, we would, in all likelihood, go with the folks who've actually got the ability to afford the fines first. Try to get, like we do with any other code enforcement kind of stuff, do, you know, get voluntary cooperation, and then failing that, we would, we would proceed probably, again, more to the folks who are actually directing and managing and operating the service as opposed to the, you know, to the kid who's just trying to pick up a few bucks with his bicycle, you know, doing the distribution, or, you know, if somebody probably picks up a few bucks.
But, but that depends on prosecutorial discretion, which I hate to leave up to a prosecutor to just prescribe willy-nilly on who he wants to pursue and not pursue on offenses. I don't care about the company that pays it.
Be reminded, even though the current prosecutor doesn't work directly for my firm, I mean, as a city attorney, I'm the chief prosecutor, so to the ultimate extent that, you know, what I prosecute ultimately does, you know, I take direction from the city council in that regard. And so, you know, if, if, you know, I'll certainly want to be sure I'm going with what the city council wants in that regard.
Well, again, just to clarify, I have issues potentially leaving the handbill distributor on the hook for the fine. I think it should be placed on the person that hires the handbill distributor or the company that hires the handbill sponsor. The distributor themselves could be a kid on a bike, and if we really wanted to be mean that day, you know, there's no stopping us, right? Other than common sense.
Sometimes, sometimes the handbill distributor is the only one doing it, depending on what the...
Well, then he's the sponsor, though.
Well, he's also the distributor.
But he's the sponsor. There's a hierarchy here, right? There's distributor and sponsor, there's two people.
Right.
So if you're the distributor and you're profiting off of the product you're distributing, then you're also the sponsor. You could be the same person. It could, the same person could be both definitions. I mean, because the handbill sponsor is any person who uses a handbill as a medium or advertising or spreading a message. Right? The distributor is not using that, he's just making a buck, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could have a company that is a distributor, and he takes in handbills from 45 people, hires people to go out and send them. So are you talking about the guy that's actually driving, or are you talking to the guy that's facilitating 25 of those guys?
The guy facilitating 25 is a sponsor or a distributor. He's making money off of...
The sponsor says, creates the material, is the way I'm reading. And then you could have a distributor who hires 25 people to distribute for multiple sponsors. So you're worried about the guy that's driving a car around making seven bucks an hour?
I'd take that. So I guess what I'm worried about is the hand, the definition of handbill distributor includes any person engaging or engaged in the business for higher or gain of distributing handbills, right? And any person receiving compensation directly or indirectly from the distribution. So that's the kid on the bicycle. Or it's the conglomerate that's distributing all these flyers for different companies. Those are two very different entities doing the same definition of work. So to John, I take your point, you're right. Thank you for correcting me. It's not the sponsor, because that could be Tom Thumb, right? They're not the one illegally distributing it. So I have issues with handbill distributor and how we would enforce that, right? And how far down the chain that we would want to enforce that, right? The guy following the orders for $5 is not the one that we should be holding accountable for following orders in this case. So that, I mean, I'm one person, so that's just my concern with the way it's written.
In my past experience in other cities, because there have been a couple of other cities where we've had this similar situation and had dealt with it, we've typically gone against about, we generally have gone with the company who's doing the handbills and getting them sent out for distribution and not the individual. You know, now occasion, you know, of course, some of the issues, you know, we have sometimes prosecution is, you know, the distributor, the guy actually passing it out, may not be doing and following the directions and knowingly, you know, that the handbill sponsor, you know, the producing company is telling them how to do it, which is another issue we would have to do in prosecution.
Well, that seems like a training issue, not, I mean, that's not something we should be, you know, concerned about, their training, right? If they get the penalty, they'll make damn sure that their employees are doing it the right way, or they don't hire them. I, again, I'll, I'll let it lie, I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned with the broad definition of handbill distributor here, so.
Yeah, of course, as Kevin said, our, our goal is to get voluntary, voluntary compliance, and we will certainly meet with the prosecuting attorney since this is a new ordinance, to make sure we discuss those things and how to, how to best move forward, so.
But the gate will be, the horse will be out of the barn once this is approved, right? It'll be an after-the-fact sort of thing with the attorney, right?
It would really depend on the interpretation of how he would want to do that.
Well, that, the interpretation of the ordinance, I guess, is what I'm concerned about, right? That varies from person to person, so I'll be quiet, just throw that out there.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a point well taken. Brian, do you have, do you have a question?
I do, I have a question. How does handbill and what you presented to us tonight, how does that differentiate from a handbill that the Dallas Morning News periodically distributes in the same manner, not to their subscribers, to the general population in whole? How do we differentiate between that and not call that a handbill where we would fine the Dallas Morning News? Or any other publication, for that matter?
And honestly, we've, I've had another city where it was complained about with the Dallas Morning News just dumping their... about with the Dallas Morning News just dumping their sample papers on people's lawns who are not subscribers.
And it's occurred here.
We've had to go to below and say, "Stop doing that" in our cities, and when we've had these kind of ordinances, these kind of complaints.
But doesn't that also cross the line to the free expression rights?
Potentially, and I think we would just deal with that on a case-by-case basis. But on the other hand, again, you know, time, place, and manner regulations are allowed with respect to distribution of papers, and with respect to subscribers, subscribers are consenting to that distribution, non-subscribers are not.
Well, that, and those are the people I'm concerned with, because we have periodically received those here in Highland Village from the Dallas Morning News.
Right.
In the same manner.
And we would probably have to be, give some consideration of telling them, "Don't, don't drop, don't just distribute them by tossing them on the yard."
So, there's not, there's not, but less than a handful that even do this? Is there, is there a notification process that we can proceed with, giving them notice upfront, and if it's, if it occurs again, then we can proceed with further warnings or prosecution?
I mean, we, we could, I think, you know, it would be coming on city, city staff to kind of figure out, and then maybe through Lori, we could kind of work with, you know, some of the local media to advise them that if you have this kind of practice, please advise, "We've just passed this ordinance, and please don't do it anymore." I've got to give them a heads up. But, you know, typically, we don't know who's doing it until it's done, is kind of what we, you know, and so, just like any, many code enforcement issues, you know, we'll, you know, once we get a complaint about a particular vendor who's doing this, you know, I think staff would then, you know, contact that vendor, make them aware of the ordinance, tell them, "Go forth, don't send anymore," and, and then be done with it.
Well, essentially, right.
And hope they don't, and then they've had their warning.
We have, we have, in my experience, there are four different, let's call them general term, handbill. They can come in the form of a newspaper as a subscriber. We get two in the mail that are delivered to our mailboxes, and we get one that's thrown haphazardly upon our properties, right?
Right.
So, the only two that are really of concern are the one that's currently thrown haphazardly, and in the event that the Dallas Morning News throws one for general advertising to get subscribers.
Yeah.
The other two are complying through mail distribution. So, we only have one or two that we have to notify. So, a preemptive strike against them on a notification process could eliminate this if this passes.
Okay.
Mr. Feaster?
Would it be a violation of the ordinance if, where they threw the paper was within the right-of-way?
You know, I was, honestly, I was, kind of as I, we started this item, I was looking at that.
Because they can hit it in the curb.
Technically, as it's written right now, no, because it's only addressed to being on the property. If it's tossed on the curb in the street, as it's written right now, no. Now, we could certainly add that and include it as far as, you know, putting them in any public, you know, right-of-way.
I mean, that's littering.
That's littering.
Don't we have an ordinance on littering? I bet we do.
We do, but it, we do, but it doesn't, it's kind of, it's still a little vague as far as this particular issue. I mean, I mean, look, I mean, look, give me just a second.
For a commercial purpose, is anything commercial litter? I mean, I know it's a nuisance, but is it litter?
Can you just add that sentence?
Give me just a second.
Definition of city streets, public property, right-of-way?
Hang on. Okay. Well, actually, okay, here, here we go. Yeah, it's, here's how it reads. It's, keep in mind, this is, this was, probably has not changed in 40 years, I'll bet you. It just reads, "It shall be unlawful for any person to throw, place, or deposit, or cause to be thrown, place, or deposit, or suffer or permit his servant, or any other person in his family, to throw or deposit in any street, alley, gutter, ditch, lot, or other place in this city. A carcass of any dead animal or fowl, or any meat, fish, hides, blah, 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 litter, debris, melon rines." I mean, this is, like I said, this is ancient. "Et cetera, et cetera, trash, or other unsound or offensive matter, or matter liable to become offensive or injurious to the health of those who reside in the vicinity, or owned by, or controlled by him, or to place, et cetera, et cetera." I think, despite, despite the ancient language and the, the nature of what's listed here, we've at least got some, something on the books that would take care of public streets right now.
Okay.
I mean, I won't say that someday we won't want to clean this up, but, no pun intended.
The key word there was litter, right. So, does that ordinance define what litter is?
It doesn't, let me look. Yeah, it's, it's.
Is it though? If it's wrapped up before it's opened, is it trash?
It actually, the word litter itself is not defined in the code. It would be something similar along those lines. The word trash.
One man's trash, another man's treasure.
Well, we do have trash, garbage, or objectionable matter. Refuge, rubs, trash, filth, carrying. I mean, a lot of this is going to go with whatever a, you know, with, typically, in statutes, ordinances, you would go with the commonly accepted definition if it's not specifically defined. And so, we would look to a Merriam-Webster or Black's Law Dictionary, something like that.
Is Merriam-Webster going to have a commercial handbill as listed as trash in the definition?
It might, it would have handbill listed, and it would have litter and trash and those kind of things. It would be, would be common definitions.
Well, you want your light back on?
There's?
Okay.
No.
So, I have just, I have a question. I'm so kind to let everybody else go. So, Kevin, when you said it was $500 a day.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that these.
500. 500.
What'd he say? Did he tell me to stop?
Yeah, I got it.
He was looking at something, I think.
Yeah, I'm listening, I'm listening. I was just looking at some other.
Oh.
Trap, by, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thanks for the help. Section, yeah, there, trash and debris is, let's see if litter is also in here. Litter is not, but trash and debris includes all manner of refuse, including amounts of dirt, piles of leaves, grass and weed, clippings, paper, paper trash, useless fragments of building material, rubble, and then it goes, just kind of goes on.
No, it's not trash.
So.
It's not considered trash, though, not until it's.
Till you crumple it up.
No, it's trash when they throw it.
Yeah, if it's paper that's been unowned, sitting in a gutter, that's trash.
So, I can now call code enforcement when people's trash flies into my yard? Is that a handbill?
Those handbills get thrown into your yard.
That's trash, trash.
Okay.
Well, I think the common sense.
It goes back to what Robert said before. One man's trash is another man's treasure. So, the distributor, the owner of the bill, that's his treasure. It's our trash, but who considers it? So, I, I'm, I'm hard pressed to believe that that's considered trash once it hits my, my yard. If I pick it up and I read it, it's not trash until I find there's nothing in it. So, it's not considered trash when it hits and sits until I pick it up and identify it, so.
But wouldn't it be because the act of throwing the handbill is illegal if this is adopted? Whether it land in the street or land in the yard, the act of throwing it to deliver to the residential.
Unless you get it at their door, then you're fine.
Right, unless you do that.
So, you just got to really throw it.
If you've ever seen the people that deliver this, I delivered papers as a kid, they had a little bit of weight to them, so if you threw it well enough, you could get it to the front porch. These things are so light, they flutter. They're just throwing them out two windows, and they're landing wherever. It is certainly a problem and an issue. And even, even in the first whereas, it does state that they end up in the city streets in storm drainings, creating litter and pollution within the city. With me living on a corner, I generally get one on both sides of my house, so they're usually in the streets, they're wet, they've been ran over. Call it litter, call it trash, but the act of throwing the handbill is illegal. So, in my mind, it should be enforceable at that point.
So, there's, there's two things I don't think we've, we've defined here. One is, is it considered to be trash at that point, right? And then that's what we're talking about. And the other was the differentiation between the Dallas Morning News and what we're currently seeing. Is it possible, then, for us to suspend this to the next meeting, allow you more time to research that, those pieces, and see how we can rewrite this if necessary?
Certainly.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then that we suspend.
I have a question, and I have been very kind. Well, if I push this button, it's going to call the police department in here, and I don't want to push the button I have. So, I'm going to ask a question. I know, I've been so kind to y'all. Kevin, $500 a day.
Each offense occurrence.
Each, but here's my question. I don't know that they're throwing these in the entire city in one day. I got it yesterday. Hands, show of hands, who got?
I haven't been home yet, so.
I got it yesterday.
I don't get any of them, I feel left out.
I think mine's been sent in my yard for the last three days.
So, I, so, what's the ceiling of that? It's $500 a day.
Well, well, it's, no.
They throw it again?
It's the, it's the single act of throwing it onto somebody, a residential property.
I understand that.
That's one violation. If it sits there for five days, it's still just one violation, because the, it's the act of placing it on the residential property.
So, it's just $500?
That's the one, $500. But then you go next door, that's another $500.
All right.
Two doors down, it's another $500, potential.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not saying $500 a day until they stop, because that could be.
Well, but then they go and do it next week.
Right, it's another $500.
That's a new round of $500 violations.
And I don't even know how often they do this. I, I can't say that it's.
It's almost weekly.
I know, I know, I get mine in the mailbox weekly.
Every Wednesday, I pick one up and throw it in my trash, want to take trash out.
Okay, so I, obviously.
Problem solved.
I'm not, yeah, so.
And we do not confuse it anymore, but we have a number of ordinances that state a fine up to a certain amount per day, per incident. So, we could go crazy on that. We don't. And sometimes, if we write more than one ticket, when it goes to court, they'll say, "Okay, we'll knock it down, we'll take days off." So, there's certainly discretion, and I think it's, it's applied properly.
But I do think that we have a number of ordinances that are on the books that we don't, that are, are violated and we don't find. And so, this, I don't want this just to be another, another ordinance, so, you know, we address this. I mean, we need to have teeth in it, and, but we do need to contact these, the sponsors and say, "Look, we have passed an ordinance."
Yeah, that's, that's a first step. It's the easiest way to do it.
But, and I don't even know what time of the day or night they throw it. So, if, if they're, the police department's out trolling the streets and they see them toss a thing, are they going to stop the, then it goes back to Robert's point, the distributor, and say, "Look, we have an ordinance now, you need to stop." So, I mean, that'd be one way. I obviously don't pay enough attention to when it arrives. It's just.
Well, that's what happens with a solicitor ordinance. When we see people going door-to-door, they've been known to ask, "Do you have your badge?"
Right, and they could do that if they saw it. Okay, I, I just wanted to.
Our police department moves them along if they don't.
What that meant by, and, so now, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, before we get the motion, I'd like to know clearly what you're asking Kevin to do between now and the next meeting, so we don't go through the same thing.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I'm not clear on what you're asking.
So, just don't ask yet.
Further define handbill and trash, so we're covered, to his point, if it's in the street or in the gutter system. And, well, we talked about you're going to do a notification. I don't know if that has to be in here, give them one notification or not. That was my big concern. But I want to, I want a clarification of what's different between this type of handbill and what Dallas Morning News does periodically to solicit more subscribers, because they'll throw the same types of paper in the same type of container in the same form and fashion on a street.
But I understood Kevin to say that a newspaper thrown to someone who's not a subscriber as an uninvited, that's litter. If it's thrown to a subscriber, it's not. So, therefore, it'd be up to us to prosecute them on a case-by-case basis. Don't have to notify them, just if they throw it and.
So, you would consider, then, that Dallas Morning News, for in that manner, to be a handbill?
Uninvited, yeah. Unwanted, unwanted.
Is that what your understanding of it is, Kev?
Well, you tell me. I mean, is that what you want or don't want?
Does this ordinance, then, cover it in that term?
At this point, it only covers those who, who, it only creates a defense for the throwing of papers to subscribers.
So, they would only be, they would only be covered to their subscribers?
Yes.
And anything else distributed would fall under this?
Right.
Okay.
Because it says, printed or written matter, any sample or device, dodged circular, leaflet, pamphlet, paper, booklet, or any other printed, otherwise reproduced, or original or copy.
As long as we understand the difference between, if there is one, between this type and when Dallas Morning News does it. But if, if the city goes forth and does, provides a preemptive notification, that's probably going to cease anyway with the Dallas Morning News. I don't know about anybody else, but, so.
I mean, I don't really care if they do a notification, because there'll be a new, new one in a month, you know, a publication coming out. But they get the first warning. So, it's a matter of, when do you follow up on that second warning? I just want to not create more work when I think we've got it covered, and I think the good discussion's of really what it is. I just hate seeing those things in my gutter every day.
I agree. But are we?
I've never opened up one, and I've lived here for 13 years now.
Are we satisfied, then, that Mr. Feaster's concern about street and gutters has been satisfied? Mr. Feaster?
Don't worry about my concerns. My concerns are my concerns, so. You guys satisfy yourselves. I'm just.
Well, I think.
This is a hammer to a very small nail, and I just, it's far in excess of any problem that I think we have, so, that's all. I'm not sure you're going to assuage my concerns. I just want to make sure we've addressed it.
Well, absolutely, and, but I have received numerous complaints in writing and just by people.
I have as well, but I'm not sure the city gains anything by prohibiting the distribution of anything that can be beneficial to one of our residents, even if we opt not to take part of what advertisements are coming to our house, right? So, I mean, somebody's got to be using these things. They keep sending them out. Somebody's paying for it, they're making money.
I mean, it comes down to the fact that we're not limiting them from getting it, we're just making sure that it's done in the appropriate way, right?
Put it in the mailbox.
Yeah, put it in the mailbox or tape it to the front door, right? It's affixed. They can still get it, it's just more effort on the distributor than just throwing it in a yard where it's going to blow into somebody else's.
I mean, if it's the same thing that Grapevine's getting in the mailbox, spend money and mail it, spend a little bit of money, like our great newspapers in the area do. They deliver in the mailbox, so. And I don't want anybody reporting, I take the Dallas Morning News, I don't want, I want the Dallas Morning News, so, don't, I don't want anybody.
Community impact mail.
Right.
Cross-Temperance Mail.
Cross-Temperance Mail.
Community impact.
Hey, mail, yeah.
Thank you.
I said, our great, our great newspapers.
We get a lot of junk in the mail every day that is worse than this in the street, but it's in the mail.
Right.
And Kevin's, back to Kevin's original point, it's, if we do take anyone forward with that, it's discretion to this council on how we want to proceed as well. So, if it is a distributor, that's essentially the, the main person of the complaint, then we can always go a different direction if we'd like.
So, then, to that point, then, do we want to make a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go.
Okay.
Sure.
I would like to ask the council to approve ordinance 2025 1328, amending. I would like to ask the council to approve ordinance 2025-1328, amending Chapter 10 of the Health and Sanitation of the Code of Ordinances of City of Highland Village, Texas, by adding Article 10.07 Handbills Regulating the Distribution of Handbills on Residential Property Within the City, first of two reads.
Okay, council, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Okay. Six, one. Okay. Thank y'all for, for the discussion. I think that's how we work everything out.
Think that dead horse we beat, we can consider litter at this point, right? It's trash?
We beat that.
Better.
We beat it.
And there is a definition for that dead horse, so.
That is clear.
All right. Late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Council, does anyone have anything?
Yes, I would like to ask that we bring back to council for consideration a discussion on the speed limit relative to golf carts in the city, please.
I'm sorry, you said golf carts?
Golf carts, yeah, on a roadway, yeah, and the speed limits.
Is that, can he elaborate on that? I don't think I understand.
I'd like just to have another discussion on having golf, golf carts accessibility throughout the community. We've got neighborhoods that are blocked, they can't get out of their neighborhoods if they want to use golf carts, and there are people that have golf carts. I think we need to look at this issue and see if there's a way we can resolve it so everybody has access.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Rhonda?
I have a couple. The first one is, I would like to, in the very near future, have the full presentation made to the city council about the discussions DCTA has been having with Corinth about a train station, because the last time they were here, they said, "Oh, no, we have had no discussions." But this fancy PowerPoint tells a different story. I'd also like them, DCTA, to include why they don't track metrics of where their customers come from, because I called other and discussed this with other agencies and other public places, and Marketing 101, everybody knows where their credit card receipts come from. They know if you make a digital purchase, what your address is. And according to DCTA, they have no idea who's buying train tickets, not at all. They just can't get that data, which I find it very hard to believe. So I want them to come up here and tell us why they're in 1990, when everyone else is in 2025. Because, again, what they're telling us is not juxtaposing what the realities is. My final one is, I would like to bring back the discussion on short-term rentals. I understand it's a private property issue, I get that, but it's also a health, safety, and welfare issue. When you have short-term rentals coming in, they are prime targets for human trafficking and sex trafficking. They come in and out of the garages, nobody knows. They damage other people's property. And when they damage other people's property in Highland Village, they can affect their security systems that people have put in because of the short-term rentals. And more importantly, they can affect their medical devices that are connected to their Wi-Fi that may or may not have been knocked out. And so also having, I know, again, private property, but when you have three commercial vehicles in the, in the driveway every single day when there's renters in and out, we now have, we verified, commercial trash pickup at these short-term rentals. So I, I'm all for private property, but when you start infringing upon the people enjoying their property and you get to the health, safety, and welfare of our children and our, and our seniors, we need to have a discussion. So I'd like to bring that up.